All right, good morning. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Board Work Session for Monday, April 1st, 2024. It is 10:03 a.m. My name is Ty Menter, Chair of the Board. To my left is Vice Chair Commissioner Wayne Fournier, Commissioner Carolina Mejia, Commissioner Gary Edwards, and Commissioner Klaus on Zoom. I'd like to welcome our new County Manager Leonard Hernandez, who's here in person for his first meeting, so we're really excited about that. And Assistant County Manager Rob Bielder as well. We are here for two hours to cover a couple of different topics, but first up is the Timberland Regional Library 2023 Annual Report. And we've got two of our board members, right, from the TRLs to give the presentation, Mary Beth Harrington and Nikki.
Nicolette Oliver.
Very good. Public Virtual attendance is on the Thurston County YouTube channel, and I'm gonna just... Should I go straight to TRL? Anybody need to make an introduction of any kind? Nope? Okay, you guys are up.
All right, great. Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners, and welcome. Thank you so much for having us today. What we'd like to provide to you is the 2023 State of Timberland Regional Library Report, as well as several 2024 initiatives. As you know, Timberland Regional Library serves over 550,000 people in Pacific, Lewis, Gray's Harbor, Mason, and Thurston County. That covers over 7,000 square miles, and we have 29 physical locations, but we also have other ways that we provide services to other areas as well. You should have received the Timberland Regional Library's 2023 Annual Report, which is also available at trl.org. We want to take this opportunity to thank our 245 staff across the district for their efforts. You may not know this, but next Tuesday is Library Workers' Day, so it's a special time for us to celebrate everything that they do. At this time, I'd like to turn this over to Nicolette Oliver, our other trustee from Thurston County, so she can provide the 2023 statistics.
In addition, I'd like to state, we are responsible for providing library services not only to our counties, but also neighboring tribal nations, which is exciting. And in addition to the Library Workers' Day, this Wednesday is Library Giving Day. And so there's a lot of library swag available on our website if you're so interested. So here's the stats for 2023. Our physical checkouts were 1.6 million, which is an increase of 8% from the previous year, 2022. Our overdrive, that's our digital collection, the checkouts are 1.1 million, which is an increase of 18% from the previous year. So that's eBooks, audiobooks, e-magazines.
Are those statistics only for Thurston County, or is it for all of...?
Those are for Thurston County.
Okay.
Yeah, I think the packet you have is for the whole system, and we're highlighting our Thurston County stats. Yes, so stats are up, both physical and digital for our county, which is great. We have 148,830 active patrons from 2017 to 2023. So we're... we have active patrons as people who have checked something out over the past year. Because some people, they might have gotten a library card many years ago, but haven't used it. This is active people who go to the libraries who use our services. Thurston population, I'm sure you're aware, is 303-ish thousand, and did you want to do this section?
No, you do that.
All right. Expanded access is something we're very excited about. It extends library hours from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. daily, so that people can come in, check out, use computers, printers as necessary, and then pop back out, especially in this post-COVID world where some people are still needing less contact with others. Sometimes they can still use our services and still use our facilities. I should have brought in my keyring, but you can check out a little fob key, go into the library, do what you need to do, then come on back out. That's not in all libraries. So, for example, downtown Olympia does not have that.
Right, it's specifically our rural libraries.
It does include Tenino, and some of our other libraries, including Westport, Elma, Elwaco, Ocean Park, and it's coming to a few other places too. We're also expanding our Anywhere Library. That's the new version of Bookmobiles. And so that is going to Lewis County, Thurston County, Pacific and Mason Counties. We're highlighting existing community hubs such as ECAPs, Head Start, senior centers, churches, places where people are already gathering. We're bringing our Anywhere Library van, and we're offering library services there, including Wi-Fi, checkouts, library card registration, et cetera. For building improvements, we have done some really fun, exciting projects. My personal favorite being West Olympia being doubled in size this past year. That was very exciting. Also, we have some building improvements completed in McLeary, Elwaco, and North Mason, and Hootsport over up north there. All right, a library card design contest was completed for three age groups, birth to five, six to 11, and 12 to eight. If you haven't popped into a library recently, I highly advise it. You can see we printed the library cards on physical cards. So it's all these cute little kid designs. They're also available online, and some of them have been made into stickers that you can put on like your Stanley cups and whatnot. They're adorable. I think there was one child who was interviewed. He said he spent 26 hours on this very detailed picture of his local library that he had stenciled himself. They're just gorgeous. We're also expanding our books by mail service for those who cannot physically come into the libraries. You want a book, we can send it to your house, and we launched a new website for the digital experience. We have user-friendly features, including translations into different languages such as Spanish, Korean, Vietnamese, and Chinese. And we are expanding our collections of Asian language books, including Korean and Vietnamese physical materials, specifically here in Thurston County at the Lacy, Olympia, and Tomwater Libraries, in the last one for 2023. And we are very, very excited to announce, in 2023, we are maintaining the board's stance on supporting rural libraries. There was a push, I guess staff suggestion, to close some of the rural libraries, including Amanda Park, but we heard very loudly from our local tribal nations, including the Quinol tribal leaders, that no, we want to maintain a commitment to these rural libraries, keeping them open for service. And the board has not only kept the Amanda Park library open, we also purchased land in Randall, and we just, this January, voted to build a new project in Randall, Washington, a brand-new facility. And we're very excited for that. So we call that our Mountain View.
And that's the 2023 highlights, and as you know, it's already April. So here are statistics for 2024. In January, the Board of Trustees approved the construction of the new Mountain View Library. And this is, just so you know, this is the first new library building in more than 20 years. Our goal is to have it built by December of this year. We'll see, because it's construction. You know how that goes. Well, it is in Randall, right. It's called the Mountain View Library. And then as of February 15th, the Salcom Timberland Library, which is located in Lewis County, joined the list of expanded access hours. And as of March 19th, the Amanda Park Timberland Library also joined. Ocean Park refresh will be starting on October 1st and going till December 15th. That'll be interior paint, new flooring, lighting, electrical upgrades, et cetera. And most importantly, I think, Timberland Regional Library received a clean audit and a clean accountability audit for 2022. That was the last one that was done. Also, we've started something called "No Shh! It's the TRL Podcast." That's the name of it. It's a new video podcast. The first episode focused on First Amendment and censorship. The second podcast focused on TRL's approach to children's areas in the libraries. And the third podcast is going to be available soon, and will be about expanded... explaining expanded access hours, because a lot of people are kind of confused by this. What? I can go to the library when nobody's there? And then all podcasts are available on Apple Podcasts, Spotify, and TRL's YouTube channel. And I really encourage you, they're funny and informative and very, very well-produced. Also, we have something I think a lot of you know about called the Library of Things, so you can get things at the library besides library books. Thanks to the Lewis County Washington State Master Recyclers and a grant they received for $70,000 from the State Department of Ecology, there is a new gadget library housed at the Chehalis Library. Also, the American Heart Association donated 22 blood pressure monitoring kits. Library patrons may visit any of the following branches, as well as the Anywhere Libraries stops to check out a kit, and that's Aberdeen, Amanda Park, Ocean Park, Elma, Montesano, Mountain View, Packwood, Raymond, Salcom, South Bend, Tenino, Winlock, and Westport libraries. And then finally, we're in the process of working on our 2025 to 2029 strategic plan that we've had our first meeting. Both Nicolette and I serve on that committee with one other trustee, and we also have consultants who are helping us, and they'll be seeking community input sometime in the spring or summer. The timeline is still to be determined for public information about what they want to see about the library, so that we can start working on our next strategic plan. And finally, the last thing I wanted to say is, our Tomwater Library is set to be refurbished next year. That's 2025, and we expect that it's going to take nine months. So it's going to be a pretty big refurbish. With that, do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions. Just thank you.
Sure. I'll just quickly add, I'm a mom. I'm also an elementary school teacher. So libraries are a great place, especially for kids. One project we did over at the Shelter Library is we constructed this giant sunken ship structure for the kids to play in, full of little reading. It's so delightful. So if you have kids, nieces, nephews, grandkids, bring them on down to the Shelter Library. It's really a fun place to be.
I don't remember the exact size, but it's the size of a ship, and it's ADA compliant. It's huge, yeah. And also, I'm... I used to work, I think some of you know, I used to work in libraries and administration, and my daughter's a librarian, and I'm currently the president of the library for this year. We take turns. Nicolette has been president in the past, and this is my year to be president, so.
I love all the work that you guys do, and thank you for it. I didn't realize that you had libraries on tribal land as well.
Just the one.
Just that one.
But I'm curious how that works, because you collect property taxes, right? And that's how you fund most of the libraries. How does that work when it's on sovereign land? Like, what's your relationship like with the tribe to be able to fund that?
Yes, there's an RCW that outlines the responsibilities for public libraries to also provide services to local tribal nations. And so under that RCW, we cooperate with the Quinol tribe. They have provided us access to the land. We provided the building. And so we provide library services to that region, not just to the tribal reservation, but lots of folks that come up through Quinol and that whole area for vacations, for especially summertime camping trips. So it's highly used by a lot of seasonal residents as well.
The Tomwater, is the library be open the whole time?
I don't know. I actually asked that too, and they're still trying to determine. They don't know. Because it takes so much time to move things to different places, so that's still yet to be determined.
Last year, Cheryl and I didn't follow up on this, and I meant to, but I was pretty excited about this thing. She was talking about how you could go to the Seattle Library, and you could, she's like, you had to go there physically to get like a connection. But then there was like this connection you could make, and you could basically access digitally, like through the whole county system, or whatever their system is.
Yes, we have partnerships with several different...
So people hear that?
Well, there's several different... Actually, it's funny, because my family, we had this discussion about it, believe it or not, the same thing. And again, my daughter's, our daughter's a librarian, so she's into this. And yeah, there are several different partnerships, like for instance with Monoma Library in Oregon, which is an outstanding library system, as well as Seattle, right? You may have to physically go to that location and show them your Timberland library card to get through. But the other thing is, is that one of the services that I'm always so excited about, that a lot of people don't know about, is something called interlibrary loan. So if we don't own something, and that's something you're interested in, you can go to the library, and I mean, I'm sure there's parameters on it that I'm not aware of, but you could maybe get something from Oxford Library if they're a participating library. So just because our collection, when you go into our library, we call it, the staff calls it a river, so it's never the same library twice. When you walk into the library, you're gonna see certain things, but keep in mind that there's more than that available, because you have obviously 20 other locations here, and then also partnering libraries like Monoma and Seattle, not to mention the world of libraries. You could probably explain your library loan better than I can.
I'll add to that. I teach in Pierce County, and that's also a partnership area. So people who live in Pierce County, when they visit the Capitol Mall, as many of my students do, I say, "Have your parents stop by the West Olympia branch." Your parents will just show their driver's license, and they can get a TRL library card in person, but they could also just sign up online for a digital access. Not that it's a competition, but we do have amazing digital collections for students through the MyTRL program. And so I often ask my students who live out of county to have a digital access, because we offer things such as subscriptions to ABCMouse.com for elementary-age students to build phonics and basic math skills. We also, just while we're talking about kids, have really fun partnerships for like fishing kits and discovery backpacks with discovery passes for kids to get outside of the house and explore our beautiful Pacific Northwest now that the weather's getting better. So if any kids want to go out for spring break or do some fun summertime stuff, you can check out amazing experiences from the library, including passes to the local Hands-on Children's Museum, et cetera.
The Seattle Library, you know, is worth a trip just to see the buildings.
It's the top, it's in the top five libraries in the country.
Yeah, so I mean, the idea that, oh, I gotta go up there, and that's a worthwhile day trip to just go up there and get your little, whatever that partnership card is saying, and then it just opens up all kinds of stuff on your computer. And then, yeah, so I worked in libraries in high school and college.
That's right. I forgot about that.
Here in my heart, and I brainwashed my daughter to the point where like, this is the reason I've been in Seattle libraries, because for her birthday, she wanted to go, she found online this like Seattle book, like walking tour kind of thing. So we ended up going to all these different bookshops and library, and famous places that like famous authors had like, you know, had beers at or whatever. I don't know. It was an interesting like tour around Seattle. But anyway, she's wanting, pushing me to get this whole thing sorted out with the digital access.
Yeah, it's phenomenal. So your library is a lot more than just, I mean, your library down the street is great, but there's a lot more to it.
I gotta say, I love when the kids get excited. My two children have been competitively reading. It has been like fierce competition for their schools, Battle of the Books. We partner with the local libraries. And so they have to read 10 novels, and then they get quiz like Jeopardy-style on the characters and the setting and the plot. So they have to know those books. They have to be ready. And so their teacher will give them like a certain set of books, but my kids have been going to the library and checking out some of the books ahead of time and reading them in advance.
Their schools do Battle of the Books?
They do. So my kids are like, "The other team's going down."
That was a big thing in my house for years.
I'm so excited to read. I love it.
Cool. Anybody got anything else before we let our library books?
No, just thank you so much for really, I mean, it makes my heart happy, right? Seeing two huge advocates for libraries here in Thurston County, and you know, just hearing from both of you, and you know, it makes, I know, my heart feel at ease that we're very well represented on the board. And so thank you both for really volunteering for this position and representing Thurston County. Well, just so you know, I think Nicolette mentioned, she's going to be going to PLA, which is Public Library Association's Conference, in Ohio. And I'm speaking at ALA this year and a couple other libraries. So we're not only well-representing Thurston County right here, but also nationwide.
And we're looking for best practices, because I think she had mentioned before how the libraries are like a river. And so that's kind of a new concept for libraries. I think a lot of people are used to going into their library, and the shelves are stocked full of books that stay there until they get checked out. But there's a new concept called floating collections, and so the books are going in and out. So there's fewer books on the shelves, though we have a large collection. And so every time you walk in, you're presented with a new set of books. So it's supposed to be more exciting and give you a greater variety over time, the more you visit.
Right. The other way I've explained this is, so if you think of your body, right? Your body needs to have circulation, right? Circulation needs to happen. Well, that's the same thing with the library. The library needs to be, the collection has to be, you'll hear our staff talks about the health of the collection. The collection needs to be very healthy and vibrant and circulating. And then if you take it a little step further, if you appreciate the analogy, in your body, arteries are, if arteries are clogged, you're not circulating, right? Well, if the library shelves are clogged and too many books are on there, then it actually limits the circulation. So if you walk into the library and you see open shelving, and you're like, well, all the books are checked out, well, no, that is not the case. Where actually, it encourages circulation and encourages people to check out, and people are able to find what they need a lot easier, so.
And while we do cull a lot of unused books and titles, we do also archive ones that we find of special interest at our service center in Tomwater. So we have these special shelves of like local author books or historical books from Thurston County that we save and preserve.
Are these from the contest?
Yes, those are the children's designs. They're adorable.
So can you go in and choose your...
You can choose your library card.
Not from these, but from the three that won.
These were just like different contestants?
Yeah, right. Those, yeah, three, I think, three age groups, right.
And you can go in and choose your...
Your library card, or get a little sticker.
Right, exactly. And I know we were talking that you guys are just now starting an art contest. And so maybe we can partner with the library for that too.
That'd be excellent.
It's April 1st already.
It is.
And April 3rd is Library Giving Day?
Yes.
Can you share a little bit of what is that?
Okay, library, sorry, can I?
Go for it.
Library Giving Day, I'm really excited about this, because it was actually something that was started in Seattle, but it's an international thing now. And it's basically encouraging people to donate monetarily to the library. Obviously, people can come in and donate their books, and those books are usually sold by the friends. And so that's, it's not like, I mean... go to the, sold by the friends. And so that's, it's, it's not like, I mean, we'll take a look at them and see, but most of the time they're just basically go through the, but this is, it's actually to support giving. And the TRL, we're very, as a board, we're very excited about this. So now you can, if you go to MyTRL, or excuse me, TRL.org, you can get sweatshirts and t-shirts and all sorts of things. And they're limited quantities and it's for a limited time. Now, if it's very successful, we'll see what happens. But it's a good way for you to support the library and get some good swag.
Yeah, you can get a good, a no shh mug.
I have to be careful of that, the name, I have to be careful of that name of that podcast. Yeah, exactly. Yeah, so we have Library Giving Day, as, as Nicollette mentioned, then Library Workers Week, and then later on the month is actually Library Week. There's lots of things to celebrate in April.
April's a busy month. So everybody visit your library this month for sure.
Absolutely.
I'm checking out the swag right now.
I know. Okay, so I personally bought the smiley winky face one. And then I bought the, the tie dye unicorn. And I also got the rainbow Timberland with a heart.
I think they have some really cute designs. It's really neat.
Yeah, it's not bad.
Did a good job.
Some good stuff.
So Libby is, or you said Overdrive, is your main interface then for?
I like the Sasquatch.
But the thing I like about it is because when, if you're looking for a certain book, like if you want John Gersham's Time to Kill, and when you get, when you go to the catalog, it's going to show all the different things. So it's not like you have to know, okay, that's Libby or that's, you know, different things. It'll just show you how to obtain it and you just decide which way you want to receive it.
All right, appreciate it.
All right. Thank you. Thank you so much.
We appreciate you, sir.
Great to see you.
Great to see you. Thank you.
Nice to meet you.
Thanks, nice to meet you.
All right, next up is Executive Session pursuant to RCW 4231101I to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency matters relating to agency enforcement actions or to discuss with legal counsel representing the agency litigation or potential litigation to which the agency governing body or member acting in an official capacity is or is likely to become a party. When public knowledge regarding discussion is likely to result in an adverse legal or financial consequence to the agency, budget is the topic. I see hands. This is scheduled for 60 minutes with commiseration following. My initial question is, legal counsel is referenced in this subsection.
Yes, and Travis should be joining us via his.
Oh, there he is. That was my question.
So this is?
That was my question.
Okay, we all have the same question. This is for potential litigation. Is the, is the reason that we're going into Exec Session?
Yes.
All right, Travis, can you hear us?
We're not going into Executive Session for budget.
I'm not gonna explain until we're in a.
All right, good morning. We're back. It's 11:28 a.m. The executive session is complete. There's no commissioner formal action to follow. And we're on to item three of the morning's agenda, which is commissioner items. And I'm just gonna round the room. Commissioner Edwards, saw your hand first.
Somebody gonna be attending the Rossick Forum today at noon. Got a couple folks on there. Okay. Where... where are we at? I've got a budget issue coming up. I think on Wednesday we have a budget work session in the afternoon, but we have no material and I need to make a determination if I'm gonna go to TCOM as one of my assigned meetings or do the budget. So, do we have any material yet out in that?
Nicole is working up information. We were waiting to get the sales tax information for March. We are updating the two funds that you asked to talk about are REIT and the public safety sales tax. So, we're updating those financial plans specifically and that's what we'll be bringing in on Wednesday. We were also going to talk about budget process, but we won't be doing that this week.
Thank you. Commissioner Klaus? Fournier, Mejia, any questions or items you'd like to bring up this morning?
I don't have any.
Okay. Anybody else? We're back at two with another agenda for commissioners check-in, so I guess we'll just we'll be adjourned at this point.
Yep.
Back at two.